District showcase, Dr. Huff.
All right, we have some North Middle School eighth grade students here that are going to talk to us about web. And I think we have Mr. Adam Collin here to share with us as well, so come on up. And, you know, not still the thunder, but you guys have heard of Link Crew, and this is the middle school version of Link Crew.
We're gonna watch a short video. We kind of put together a little highlight video of our web program this summer, so we'll see if they're all gonna play that, so.
Over to my web leaders here, they're gonna introduce themselves and do a short activity with you guys, and then we'll take some questions after that.
Can you tell us what web stands for? Cheers. What web stands for?
Web stands for Where Everybody Belongs.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael from the North Web Leaders. I'd like to start off by telling a little bit about me. Inside of school, I'm a regular athletic kid. I enjoy wrestling, basketball, and baseball. Outside of school, I really enjoy being myself, a country boy. I'm out in nature all the time, and I chose to be a web leader because I love helping out all these wonderful kids.
We'll visit a different college or university every spring.
I'm going to college.
I'm going to college.
Hi, my name's Anne. And so I'm a cheerleader. I like to read and write. Outside of school, I love talking to people and fashion designing. I chose to be a web leader because I think it's good to feel like you made a difference in someone's lives and be a leader and help out.
The first activity we'll be doing is called Fast Fingers. You'll grab a partner. Michael and I will demonstrate first.
Go ahead and grab your shoulder partner.
You're gonna put both hands behind your back. You're gonna start with one hand, and you're gonna throw out a number, and whoever can add them up first wins that round. You're gonna play the best out of three.
She's got the camera.
All right, here we go. On three, we're gonna do the best out of three. Okay? So, and just one hand.
Audience participation.
And of course, you guys are welcome to go ahead and grab a partner out here and try this too, so. On three, go. Ready? One, two, three. (Laughter) I would not guess we won over there.
Did you tie?
Oh, okay.
She wants you to do both hands this time? So, we're gonna make it a little more advanced.
Yeah, you just go right here. She's gonna take pictures out of this.
To find a strategy to help you add them up faster.
Say that again?
To find a strategy to help you add them up faster.
You're gonna tell us that, or?
Yeah, find your own strategy.
Sixteen. Go.
No, it's ten.
Eleven slipped.
You can take all pictures you want, Andy.
She won that one. We tied the first one, she won.
Who could figure out a strategy for the game? Or activity? What was your strategy?
To mess up Jeff, I would, instead of doing like six, I might do, I might do that.
This kind of relates to what we're trying to do for our web kids. We're trying to give them these strategies and these different tools of various kinds, so that they can feel more comfortable in this, in their middle school environment
with this. Like I said, the environment and their teachers as well. We want them to be as successful as they can be throughout middle school.
Thank you for your time.
So, did you tell us the strategy?
No, that was, one strategy Dr. Huff brought up is he just made it harder for somebody to really focus on that. I had a strategy over here.
Bring zeros every time.
Okay. There you go.
My strategy with my partner was taking pictures.
Not play the game.
If you have any questions for them or me, we'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
So, what grade you guys in?
Eight, he has to be an eight.
So, you're going to be a part of the Link Crew maybe when you go to high school and be a part of that group too?
I'm trying to.
Good.
Are y'all still working with sixth graders now? What are you doing, like, currently?
Right now, currently, we've been trying to get together with them as many times as we can, because on Friday, for our Friday encore, we go into the gym and we try to get together with them and ask them how, how things going. Trying to see, make sure that they're having a good time, make sure that they're using their tools like they need them, and we're trying to get, we're trying to see if it's working out for them as well as we're hoping it is. And we're playing these activities with them, helping them let loose a little bit, and that way they can have fun as well as work.
Now, you encourage them to join some kind of club as sixth graders?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and talk for just a minute. If you notice in the video, there was two videos mixed into one. One was actually all of the web kids. They weren't in their t-shirts, but that was our training sessions. We went through two days of intense training where they came in and they worked with each other to prepare for that. And then they came in and did the web training, which we call the gauntlet, where we bring all those sixth graders in, and then they went with those sixth graders without me. We sent them off into our building, and they had about anywhere from six to 10 kids in their group, and they had to go and teach them lessons. So, they did a great job. We have 50 web leaders in our group. We've got about another 10 kids that are on our A team, which help out with just various activities. So, we have a large group of web kids.
Is this a national program? Or is this something you developed?
This is not something we developed. We, the high school took on Link after the tornado. They were invited to go to this conference, and they loved it. The teachers took off with it, and we got invited to go last year, and we went and got trained, and we brought it back and we're using it, and continue to use it as long as we can have the support and the teachers that are trained. So, you do have to have two trained members in your building to run the program, so as long as you continue to keep trained members in your, in your schools, then you have a program that can sustain itself and run.
Good job.
I'd like to just say, you know, one thing about this is, we have, we've always had a transition program for sixth graders coming in. This is the first time we've had a program that's ongoing throughout the year, and I think that's what we're gonna really see the big difference. And honestly, the eighth graders are gonna, they get a lot of skills in leadership, and I mean, they, they're developing, they're changing, they're affecting the other eighth graders. We've really seen, we've seen a difference this year in the smoothness of the sixth graders coming in the middle school. So, I've noticed a difference, and I've been there 15 years, so I've noticed a difference this year. And also, Adam has done a fantastic job. I mean, he's, he worked his tail off all summer. He's done, he's done, his leadership has been pivotal in the success of our program at Middlesbrough, so.
And Adam, who's the other trained, who's your partner?
It was Ingle, but he bailed on us. We, we trained five others.
We took five others to a mini-conference where they were able to get some tools to help me with that, and then we're gonna look, hopefully, to send another one to get trained and certified, hopefully this year, if not this year, next year. And I know Brett's over at West Central now, but, which leads me to the next question. Is there an elementary version of the same thing? There is not at the present time. Actually, Mr. Ingle came over and got some of the material from, he was like, I gotta have some of that stuff back, so he came over because he wanted to use some of the activities with his staff at West Central, and then hopefully he'll, he'll tweak it a little bit and maybe turn it into an elementary program too. It also works, there's seven A buildings, so seventh graders coming into eighth grade buildings, it works for them just as well, and that's the key there.
Two other important points. One is the fact that I think we, we need to be, be really sure that we don't underestimate what our kids could do. It's amazing to walk in and see eighth graders who we typically think have to be, you know, supervised at every, at every single moment, being the supervisors of sixth graders before the sixth graders have even been in the building. Our kids can do amazing things if we trust them to do that, and I think that that's, that's one thing. The second thing is, I think it's also important to know, the Bright Futures has supported the, the web piece coming on. I mean, they saw the success with the Link Crew, and they, they've made some really significant financial support to help us bring the middle schools on, and so it's working. And it's working because of teacher leaders and because of student leaders, and it's awesome.
Kudos to all of you. Good job.
Y'all might want to stick around for archery information, because I know you guys are into that.
Well, I guess that's almost a segue. Let's see, I guess we got approval agenda, and then we'll get into that.
And with that, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Approve the agenda.
Second.
Ms. Sharp, Mr. Still, motion to approve agenda. Any discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Dr. Huff, superintendent report.
Okay. I wanted to talk to you, give you an update on standards of excellence, and Dr. Bestendorfer's gonna talk to you a little bit about middle school preparation for high school enrollment.
Now, I, I mentioned last, last month that our goal is gonna be just to bring some of the work that we're doing on a regular basis, just to kind of highlight some of those things. And so, one of the things that we, what we have in our standards of excellence plan is that rollout of the new career path high school and all of those pieces, and it's kind of a scary transition, I know, for some, because anytime you're enrolling your eighth graders into a high school, that's a scary thing, and whenever it's all different, then that's even, even more. And so, we really have worked hard on a plan, and so I've invited Brandon up because he's, he volunteered, actually. Brought a group of folks together from middle school, high school, counselors and administrators together to decide what needs to happen in order for parents and students to understand and be ready to enroll at the high school with the new kinds of things that we have approaching. And so, I'm gonna pitch it to Brandon.
Okay. I'm tanning out, just kind of, it's a timeline that we put, that the committee put together, and also an example of, and when we get to that pyramid, the, what schools get, what I get from a school, from our Missouri Connections program that our, that our students took. And so, we'll kind of go over that a little bit. Our committee, we started off with a committee of principals, counselors, and we kind of came, and, and Dr. Bestendorfer and Ms. Cravens, we kind of came up with a, some big ideas on what we thought needed to be done at the middle school level to prepare students to, you know, for, for the, for the new high school and the new, and the new way that we're gonna be going about business at the high school. And it's, it was extremely important for us to do a couple of things to make them, to be, let them become familiar with what they're gonna be entering and, and how they're gonna be prepared for that. It started, if you kind of look at the timeline, we had the big, with, under the big ideas. We wanted students and teachers, first we had to let our, our teachers know, because our middle school teachers, we found, were kind of, they really didn't have a real good idea of what, what their students were going to. So, we, the first thing we did was, we needed, we needed to teach our teachers and let them understand what they need to prepare their students for, and what they're gonna be, what they, how they need to be, you know, bringing up little points, you know, every now and then when they can to just kind of reinforce the issue and, and what, you know, to the students, what, what this high school's gonna look like. So, we did that by the career path coordinators coming to the middle schools and doing a, we did an in-service on their planned period, where the teachers, they, you know, they had questions, they asked questions, the career coordinators spoke about the career pathways, and just kind of gave them a, a good broad idea of what was going, what's, what it's gonna look like. The next was, you know, which is, the factor was, is on, on the middle school students is knowing about themselves. If you can kind of see, we, that was the timeline we set for that. We wanted to set specific timelines on this because we wanted to make sure that each building had a, had a, a good deadline of, okay, we want this, this needs to be accomplished by this date, because if you don't, then it kind of gets jumbled up at the end, and we're trying to rush through things. We want, we want to make sure that's spread out throughout the course of the year, so students can have an opportunity to ask questions and come up with questions of their own to, and by having that spread out the course of the year, it enables them to do that. So, knowing about them, about myself, that's when they took the Missouri Connections test, and then you can take a look at that. This is an overall view of what North Middle School looked like, and it's just percentages of what kids were interested in according to Missouri Connections. Now, each student gets something, I didn't bring a student example, but each student will get one similar to this that shows where their interests fell, in accordance to, in accordance to the Missouri Connections. That was a two-day program. Students took the, took it, went through the program the first day. The second day, they visited with the career coordinators, where they could actually ask questions about it and learn a little bit deeper about where, you know, maybe if mine was business information and technology, which it wouldn't have been, I would have, be able to ask more questions about that with, with the career coordinators. Where we, where we're moving to, and is, we did this in our social studies classrooms because we've got to prepare our teachers, and especially the teachers that are gonna be doing this with the students, to be able to answer those questions and be able to get this. So, our teachers were active, and the teachers in the classroom were active in being, in being involved in learning about the program themselves. Next timeline was, is, if you look at what do the career path, what, you know, what are the path options, are they explained? And that's through mid-January, we want to have that done. This is gonna be taught by our, our middle school eighth grade teachers, either during encore, throughout the course of the year, there, there'll be specific times in that, in that month where teachers can address what those look like, have those, those conversations with kids, and that way they have a real clear picture of what it's gonna look like. The big thing with this is a significant conversation. I think this is the most important factor in all of this, in, in preparing students for high school, is to have a significant conversation with an adult. We want that adult to be their parents, and we're gonna, we're gonna kind of attack this by giving the students a writing prompt, okay? And then, and then, you know, our proof, if they had that, that significant conversation with the adult would be to have their, you know, bring it back signed. What we're gonna do to prepare parents for this too, is before this, before they do this, we're gonna have a, a day where the parents can come into the school. We're gonna have an example, Danny's putting together a video. Karen Sue Hensley's gonna be with her, with her child, and they're gonna be going over what that structured conversation looks like. Because, to be honest with you, I don't, that's a question that's hard, that's a conversation that's, that's not easily had, you know, to be able to ask the right questions to make your child think. And so, we're gonna train the parents, we're gonna have a night at each building that's gonna train parents on how to have that conversation, what to, what questions to ask, what things to look for, and really just to spark the interest of the students. So, I kind of skipped ahead, but that's, then you go to four where they actually do it. Students that, you know, that we do, we know we're gonna have students that aren't able to have that conversation with the adult, with, with the parent or somebody at home, that, we'll take care of those kids. And those kids that they'll either have with me, they'll have it with Steve or Bud or a counselor or, or a teacher or, you know, you know, somebody that they have conf, that they have faith in, that can really ask those good questions and guide them in the direction that, you know, that they want to go, go in. Then, we're gonna explain the career paths and the enrollment process to the eighth, to the eighth graders. This is a big thing, and this is something where, you know, students are gonna have to learn, you know, they have to learn about credits, they have to learn about all that stuff and what's going on, and this is where I think the big shift is gonna be, because it's gonna be a little bit earlier than what they're used to. February's gonna come quick, and, you know, eighth grade parents, they know their, their children are gonna be in high school, but they're, this is kind of reality time, okay? In February, they're getting ready for high school, and they're gonna be in high school next year, and this is kind of where that time sinks in. And so, we want them to have, make sure that the eighth graders have that good knowledge of what the, what the enrollment process is gonna look like. And then, by the end of February, end of March, we're looking at having enrollment and students taking a step and getting the enrollment process, process taken care of. One thing we are gonna do is this year, is we're focused on eighth graders, but we're also gonna have to move, we're gonna move a portion of this to the seventh grade, and we're, we're looking at that in the spring of moving number two, where they're, where they're gonna take the career, the Missouri Connections. They're gonna take that with, we're gonna move that to seventh grade in the springtime, and that way, that's one less step we have with eighth graders, and it gives them more time to develop over the, over the course of the next year. So, that's kind of the, that's kind of our, that's our plan, and that's what we've, you know, the, the counselors were a big help. I mean, they, they, you know, they, they, you know, did a great job of, I mean, we sat down after we had our big ideas, flushed things out, and, you know, we, we were able to put, you know, have a lot of people represented from all over the, the district to kind of put their thoughts and, and put them on paper.
Just as a reminder, you know, we have five career paths. Within each of those paths, there's going to be pathways that can go from high school to work, high school to technical school, and high school to college. And then in addition to that, if you have an interest that is not just in one path, you can take an à la carte approach. I mean, you might have an area that's more of a focus and a minor area. For instance, one of the examples I give all the time is, if you want to be the, the PR person at the hospital, then you might take some things that go in the health sciences area just to get an awareness, but you're gonna go deep in the arts and communication side of things. And so, it's about finding their personal future, and so, we're excited. I'm, I'm really pleased with the way that, that they're approaching this and the fact that they're helping the parents to have the conversations, I think is important, kind of like we do at elementary school, and we say, you know, ask your kid to make predictions when you're reading with them. This is, this is the time that we need to be doing this, this next step.
Now, what we have on these career paths, will these instructors, will they be going to the middle schools, talking about their program specifically or anything?
Yeah, they did, and they did that on, but they've already done a little bit of that. The career, the career coordinators came on the second day of the Missouri Connections side when they came in, and they explained that in, in a little bit more detail for the stu, for the students.
The career path coordinators were also at parent-teacher conferences, so where they were handing out the schedule, so you knew where to go, they were catching those parents and...
And we ran out of copies. I mean, we ran, I had to make new copies of this because they, they were all handed out. I mean, the parents were, were very interested. We had a booth set up right in the eighth grade hall where we had our, where our parent-teacher conferences took place, and I mean, they, they were, you know, Janie was handing stuff out right and left, and, and the parents seemed very interested in what was going on, and so, they got, they got to see this, and they got to see their, their individual students' results.
And enrollment won't only be different for our eighth graders, it'll also be different for our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and so, we have a, a team working on making sure that that's all taken care of as well, but this is a good example of, of what we're doing.
So, will these eighth graders be enrolled in these pathways?
Yep.
I'm just gonna create some, some great dialogue, I think, between parents and students too about, you know, what do you want to be when you grow up? Let's talk about college and get, get folks focused and have some conversations early. It may not have happened otherwise.
So, when you think about the K-12 picture of that, over, you know, a few years out, we'll have a college bound in the elementary, then that whole career path, kind of who am I and what do I want to be in the middle school, and then get deep in it when you're in high school. And so, pretty interesting, you know, whole circle component of that. It's exciting.
Appreciate you volunteering, Mr. Cravens.
Thank you. Good job.
So, you stick around, isn't it bow season?
I think it is, actually.
You got the deer already, didn't you?
Yeah. So, I guess that's the segue into archery club. Thank you, Annie.
My pleasure.
Tonight, we have with us Adam Bell, Kevin, Kevin Sawyer, and I think Jeff Brown, if I'm not mistaken, is back there. Yep, there he is. They want to propose to you all the possibility of starting an archery club. And we start a lot of clubs and activities for students, but this one's a little different than, than most, and so we thought you might like to hear what it is they have in mind.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Adam Bell. I'm a technology specialist at Joplin High School, as well as a link crew coordinator.
I'm Jeff Brown. I'm a special education teacher and department chair for the special ed program at the high school.
I'm Kevin Sawyer. I teach agriculture at Franklin Peck.
We are good friends, and we have a lot of things in common. The two things that are very important to us, a little passion about our archery and our desire to help young people achieve success. And so, we got together, we were thinking, how can we bring this together and make this work? And we thought, well, we'd love to have an archery team at the high school, but how are we gonna convince the Board of Education to let us bring bows and arrows to school? So, we started looking around, and we found NASP, which is the National Archery in Schools Program. And in investigating that, we found that through the Department of Conservation, Missouri has developed and adopted their own Mo-NASP program. There are, at the, two months ago, there were 262 schools in the state of Missouri participating in Mo-NASP. Over the weekend, they just released an update that they've just enrolled their 300th school in the state that's participating in archery. Of those schools, the ones, the high schools close to us, Carl Junction, Senecus, or Coxey, all five Springfield high schools participate in the program. So, why archery in Joplin? You know, archery is, is thought of as, or, I'm sorry, Joplin is thought of as an urban area, and we are very much an urban area, and an economical hub for the four states region. But for many of us, archery and hunting and fishing is the foundation of our culture and of our family values. And for us, the three of us, as well as any outdoors, the greatest gift that we can give is to teach a child or, or show a young person the beauty of the sport and how to enjoy the outdoors. High school athletics, we know, contributes to students with higher GPAs, lower dropout rates, and higher attendance rates. The problem is, not every student is an athlete, and we understand that, and we believe that through archery, we can reach a large number of students who wouldn't be reached in any other way. This will enable us to have an even larger impact on our overall academic performance, as well as the opportunity to engrain lifelong principles of sportsmanship and citizenship. During Eagle Time, about four weeks ago, I think, during Eagle Time at both campuses, we held a brief meeting with the student body to find out who would be interested in an archery program. At that time, we had an eighty, 186 students signed up to participate, 114 males, 72 females, and the important thing to us was that 107 of these students were not involved in any other school-related activities. Now, this is based strictly off of us looking them up in infinite campus and finding out what activities and clubs they were enrolled in, and checking for extracurricular drug activities. So, those numbers, you know, may not be 100 percent. And the beauty of it, looking through the students that enrolled, is we know a large bit of our student population, we cover the entire demographic, demographic of the student population at Joplin High School. We have everything from probably our valedictorian to a kid who we know may very well want to drop out as soon as he turns 17, and everybody in between. Many students with special needs who are free to, to participate in this and can perform well in it, and we cover absolutely everybody, and that was inspiring to me. And the beauty of it, looking through the students that enrolled, is we know a large bit of our student population, we cover the entire demographic, demographic of the student population at Joplin High School. We have everything from probably our valedictorian to a kid who we know may very well wanna drop out as soon as he turns 17, and everybody in between. Many students with special needs who are free to, to participate in this and can perform well in it, and we cover absolutely everybody, and that was inspiring to me. Jim Lowe from the Department of Conservation had an interesting quote. He says, "You cannot fully appreciate this program's importance until you have watched a frail, bespectacled youngster stand confidently beside kids twice his size, slapping arrow after arrow into the center of a bull's eye. This is a sport where you can excel regardless of size or shape. Everyone uses the same bows and arrows, so success is based strictly on individual effort. No one has an advantage because of financial means." We believe that through archery, we can help Joplin schools meet several of the standards of excellence. Two that stuck out to us were standard two, waypoint two, students will be engaged in school, extra and co-curricular activities, or community, and or faith-based activities at both middle and high school level. That student survey, you know, we told you about, I think, I wanna say 186 students had signed up for it in the last two weeks, that's grown to over 200 students. As students are talking about it, more and more of them come up to us. I know the three of us get hit a dozen times a day by different kids every day, wanting, you know, when can we start this, when are we gonna be able to do this? So, we will certainly get more kids involved helping to achieve that waypoint. Standard two, waypoint five, students will graduate with skills and habits needed to be successful as college and/or career-ready citizens. Data shows that students involved in extracurricular sports have higher attendance and less discipline referrals. This is helping our graduation rate. Archers require not only some physical strength, but also mental fitness, and archery develops flexibility and attention to skills, which would be highly sought by employers in our community. Again, helping us to achieve waypoint five.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Students with disabilities, do they liken, in hunting, are they allowed to use a crossbow in competition?
Not a crossbow, there's one specific bow that has to be used, but there are, I mean, it could be shot, if there was a young man or woman who was in a wheelchair, that could be done. There's accommodations made for, there's even accommodations of release aid built where a student with one arm, we've seen, can pull the bow back. There's a device where they can grab with their teeth and pull the bow back and shoot and still compete that way.
Okay.
We believe strongly that we can make a difference in the culture of our school. Part of our coaching philosophy is we understand that not every student is capable of making As and Bs, but we know that every student is capable of passing their class and earning their credit. We believe that some students just need a little extra motivation, some desire to help them achieve that. All students will be welcome to participate in our practices, but we will not allow a student with a current F to compete with us. So, if it's the middle of the quarter, we're competing Saturday, and we pull grades on Thursday, if there's an F, they just won't compete, because we believe that there's no reason that a student cannot pass their class. Due to self-discipline and focus that is necessary to be successful in archery, we have faith that discipline in the classroom will also see a positive impact. We cannot allow students who are gonna be behavior problems to be involved with bows and arrows, you know, for safety reasons and the safety of our other students. Through our desire, the three of us, and our commitment to build meaningful relationships with our students, we believe that we can have a significant impact on the high school attendance rate. I know my son, for one, is a sophomore football player. He's earned the right to dress out on Friday nights, he's not gonna play. But if he's sick on Friday, he won't have it. He'll show up to school because he wants to be there, and that's the motivation that he has. Sick or not, he's gonna show up to school because he wants to participate. And the, the interest that we've received from our students, we believe that will have the exact same impact on him, and they're gonna wanna come to school and want to be involved. NASP has proven results in a nationwide survey from 2009 to 2012 of all students participating in the program across the nation. There was an 84% increase in students' confidence, 76 to 78% increase in motivation and concentration, and this one's huge for me, a 74% increase in student behavior at school. 43 to 49% increase in performance and attendance, 40% interest in other sports, 79% in target archery, 30% in other shooting activities. Is this safe? This was Dr. Sekett's largest question. According to the National Safety Council, archery is more safe than any ball sport with the exception of table tennis. The National Archery in Schools Program reports that in 10,000 events, they have been accident-free. This bow, for those of you that are familiar with archery, is a 20-pound bow. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, I, nothing less than a 50-pound bow is, is allowed to hunt with, you know? So, this isn't a super-strong, powerful weapon, you know, it's, it's certainly not a toy, but it's a very safe draw weight that all students can use, and respected will be very safe. The cost of archery for 100 students, we base this on 100 having over 200 sign up. I think conservatively, if we have 50% of those that actually come out and participate and have the parent support to be able to do that, if we figure 100 students, puts us at around just shy of $9,000 that it will cost. And that's not, you know, we understand we can't provide a bow and arrows for every student, but we feel that five bows per student would break that up into groups where the three of us could handle that and give them one-on-one attention and instruction and still maintain a safe environment with everybody shooting at one time. We plan on funding this through the Missouri Department of Conservation Grant. They've committed to giving us a $1,500 matching fund grant. We'll have to come up with the other 1,500. There are also grants available from the National Wild Turkey Federation, Bass Pro Shops, Cabela's, Academy Sports, community support, and then the list was far greater than I could put on this presentation, but there's tons and tons of grants available. Funding our program, I don't believe, will be a problem at all. We will have three certified instructors at the high school, the three of us. There, that, that training is put on at no cost to us through the Missouri Department of Conservation. If we host it onsite, they will provide some of the equipment to us. They'll give us two, two targets or one of the arrow nets for safety, and they ask that we have 10 people there. One thing that we were gonna do, and we, we started off thinking, our time, this is gonna be big enough with 200 students involved that we can expand outside of the high school right now. We would love to go to the middle schools, but we just thought there's no way we could do that. When talking with the Missouri Department of Conservation, I need to email Ms. Flowers and see if that's something that they would be interested in teaching a unit in, in the gym classes at the middle schools. And if they are, each middle school will also qualify for a $500 grant, matching funds grant. So, for $1,000 per middle school, we can get all the equipment that we need to teach a unit of that in our PE classes, which would be fantastic for us at the high schools. It would feed kids to us, and I've got to believe that as high as the student interest is at the high school, it has to be the same at the middle schools. So, we've reached the point in our planning where we're ready to seek funding. We don't wanna go submit grants and ask the community for those funds until we know we have approval. We've worked our way up through Mr. Starkweather, Dr. Sekett, and Dr. Huff, until we have the opportunity to speak to you, beautiful people.
Where are you gonna hold, you know, compete, where are you gonna hold practices?
Sure. Practice is what we have right now in the new school. Mr. Starkweather's, I think it's called Gymnasium Three, the one with the rubber floor in it that ROTC's gonna be using, he's committed to letting us use that as well. Until we get there, right now, we have the tennis courts at 910, weather permitting, that can be used. We have the cafeteria at 910. We have to work around dance teams in there two days a week, so we'll have to work around that. And then, Saturday has something available for us.
Well, possibly, there, there could be another building close to the 910 campus available coming up, possibly, possibly, but it's...
I thought the greenhouse was on the tennis courts.
There's, there's a lot of open area behind the greenhouse. There's approximately about, I would say, 70 to 80 feet until you get to the street, and it's about 100 feet long going to the trailers. So, there's plenty of room there where we can hold, hold practice and, you know, like Adam said, weather permitting.
And this is the, you're trying to have a MISH sport or just a club?
Well, this actually is, we, we, there's a lot of gray area with MISH on this. Carl Junction believes that it's a MISH activity, Seneca says it's not. So, Mr. Matt Hyatt and myself called MISH to find out exactly where they stand on it, and it's on their radar. Right now, they have target sports as an emerging activity, and they're going to introduce archery underneath of that. But it takes 50 schools in three districts to register with MISH for that to happen. And there's more schools than that, of course, that are doing it, they're just not registering with MISH. So, what we've decided to do is to register with MISH, so we'll all three take the MISH exams to cover that. That gives us the catastrophic insurance. And it just looks like, moving forward, talking with Mr. Starkweather, we wanna do this correctly from the beginning, so we're not going back and redoing something. But I believe in the near future, MISH is gonna pick it up fully, and you're not gonna have a choice, you'll have to register with MISH to do it.
I think it's a great idea.
I do too. I know, Annie, when I was just talking, I was, when I was in the Boy Scouts for several years, archery was, archery was big, and Annie and I were talking about that and scouting itself, and you're gonna have a lot of those kids that's participating in, and, yeah.
Is it a year-round competition, or is there a particular time of the year that's a season, or how will that work?
Right, there are tournaments year-round, and we may have some high flyers that do that. We have one young man that's a junior, who is actually a professional archer, he's sponsored by several companies and goes around competing, that is very interested in doing this with us. We also have a young lady at the 910 campus, a sophomore, who moved here from Kentucky, who shot at Nationals last year. So, she's very interested. So, there may be some high flyers like that that we can make some exceptions for and compete year-round for them, let them go to some tournaments. But what Seneca, Carl Junction, and Sercoxie do is they start shooting like mid to late November, they'll start practices, tournaments begin early February, and then state was, when was state tournament?
States in April.
Oh, okay.
Or state competition.
Long season then.
It changes every year. This year, states in Columbia.
Columbia.
And then, from there, you can advance to Nationals, which I think is back in Kentucky. This year, it changes every year too. I think it was in St. Louis last year.
And, you know, this might sound like funny, but it's not. Hunger Games comes out November 22nd, not gonna put in a plug in for that, but that's really driven, I think, a lot of interest in archery, like girls in particular.
A lot of the female interest, for sure.
And I think Gina Davis is an arch, right?
Yes, she really?
I was gonna look it up on my phone, but I didn't want you guys to think I was ignoring you during the meeting, so I put it back. I know she's got some kind of accolades in that, so.
She spoke at NSBA last year.
I'd be, you know, be very interested in also dropping it down to the middle schools.
Yeah, I think as long as we can get picked up.
Cause I know there's a big group in the middle school level that would be very interested in doing that.
Right, yeah, and I'll send that email to Ms. Flowers tomorrow, but I know to, to satisfy the Missouri Depart, the Department of Conservation Grant, you have to teach a unit for two years is all you have to do to satisfy that grant, so.
You want a motion?
I don't really need one. I want you guys are okay. Okay, we're just gonna move forward. We don't tend to do that, but this one, we had sharp objects flying through the air, just wanted you to be aware that we're...
They don't have spongy things on the bottom?
No, they don't have suction caps.
Nerf, nerf.
Wonderful. Thanks for all your work.
Once you guys get going, we want, you're gonna bring and show us some, let, bring some kids and have a display.
No, we wanna go out there, so we can shoot.
Yeah, we wanna go shoot.
We'll go by the geese.
Good luck, guys, thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you. Okay, next up, we have a special guest this evening, really excited to have Jared Newcomb come up and give an update on initiative we started. Jared, was it last year was the first year? I've lost track, or is this year three? This is year, year three. All Pro Dads, which has been a tremendous asset to our, to our school system. I don't need to tell you all how many of our boys and girls in our community don't have a, have a dad in the home or don't have active, active parents and, or active dads, and to have a program like this that brings, brings dads in, gives them, gives them the opportunity to be involved as well as other individuals that buddy up with kids and, and serve as that role model, it's been a, it's been a great, great program. So, I'm gonna let Jared tell you a little bit about where we're at and where we're headed.
Is everybody familiar with the program that's been discussed before? Fantastic. Well, thanks for the opportunity of talking something that I'm passionate about, is fatherhood and, and just getting dads involved with their kids. As you know, three years ago, we started it here in Joplin, it kicked off at Eastmoreland, and we started with 12 people, not 12 dads, 12 people. I'm responsible for four of them, so eight strangers first, and my family sat there in the Eastmoreland library. The next year, we rolled it out with Dr. Huff's approval to the other 11 elementary schools. And this year is the third year in the program, where we now have between 800 and 900 every month that, that participate. So, we meet once a month. Eastmoreland meets the second Wednesday, everyone has their own day they meet on, but we meet at 6:45 before school starts. Everyone gets a free breakfast in the cafeteria, or in the library, or in the gym, depending on what facilities are available at that school. Then we go through a, kind of a regimented program that's a different topic every month. We talk about how to add value to your life, value of hard work, helping others. There's a different topic every month that, that's part of the curriculum that All Pro Dad provides. Probably the most important thing, I'm not sure how much of the details you guys have got on it, but we start every, every month off after breakfast with a part called "I'm Proud of You Because." This is probably the most important time of the entire meeting. The kids would tell you it's not, but you look on their faces, and that really tells the story of the value that these kids get out of that time. But we pass the microphone around the room, and it's a time for the dad to get the microphone and publicly brag to his kids on something that that kid's done in the past month. And I usually give them some outs, it could be, you know, cleaning up dishes, doing, doing well in sports, reading books, it could be anything. And as I, I always give them an out, so I don't want anybody to feel uncomfortable as the mic passes, cause I don't give them an option. You know, your child deserves it, so, you know, this is your time, you know, your child will be, when you talk to them, they rarely use what I give them. So, they'll, they'll come up with their own. It takes about 15 to 20 minutes to get through it, but we take the time, and everyone gets, everyone gets the mic and gets a brag on their kids. Shortly after that, we go to a three-to-five minute video on the topic for the month, and then that's followed by discussion time. And I can't help but make the correlation to stuff you guys just heard, and we heard the gentleman speak earlier about getting parents and kids to talk about what they wanna be when they grow up. The archery club's talking about getting involved in something. I think we're facilitating what they're looking for at the elementary age. I think they were talking at high school and junior high possibly, but... So, it's discussion card time, it's, it's two questions for a dad, two questions for the kids, and it's, it's kind of awkward conversation. It's, it's stuff like one thing I struggled as a dad when I grew up with was, and you expose yourself to your kids. You know, a lot of times, as dads, we don't have these conversations. You know, we wanna talk about sports or, or something other than our personal lives, especially when we, when we were small, so we have these awkward conversations with our kids, and it's private, that's not on the microphone for everybody to hear. But I tell the group sometimes, when we get out of our comfort zone as dads, our kids are in theirs. And it's good for our kids to hear, you know, things we struggled with. So, we'll tell, or expose ourselves to our kids a little bit, something we struggled with, and then the question for the kid might say, something I am struggling with now is, and it gives the child a chance to open up to their dad, which they may or may not have done before. As dads, sometimes we're not good at asking these questions. So, we go through the questions, and then we'll have a raffle at the end, which the kids will say they look forward to the most, and they probably do. But we do have a lot of fun with that, and we hand out a few raffle prizes just to kinda keep some excitement going. So, it's, it's going extremely well, it's in all 11 Joplin Elementary Schools, two private schools here in Joplin, and two locations in Neosho now. There's 1,000 All Pro Dad chapters nationwide, and there's just under 50 here in Missouri, Joplin being the largest of anyone in the nation.
Jared, he brought the, brought the program to me, and he's, he's a hard guy to say no to, because he's, he's passionate, and it made so much sense, and it was the right thing to do, and, and they were doing some great things at Eastmoreland, and, and the other elementaries embraced it, and they're, they're seeing great, great things too, and embraced it, and they're, they're seeing great, great things too, and Jared's really pushed that hard, and, and it's, it's taken root in other elementary schools, and we're seeing good things, so.
And just recently, I talked to the superintendent at, or not superintendent, but you, sorry, the principal at Eastmoreland, and she mentioned, this is the first year she saw so many dads involved on parent-teacher nights. She said in all, all the years she's been exposed to parent-teacher conferences, she said she's seen more dads this year than any other. And she feels that the All Pro Dads given guys that don't normally come to school and eat, kind of a way to ease into the school, and now they become comfortable, they're familiar with coming in, and they can, they come back, and it's just kind of, kind of what we do. And I guess my vision is to see this program, not, not stay in elementary schools, but, you know, what would it look like at a high school age, for breakfast, to see 500 dads with their kids? And, you know, what does that do to attendance and discipline and dropouts and grades and all that kind of stuff? So hopefully soon, it will be just part of doing business, you go to school, get an All Pro Dad, and it carries you all the way through high school.
Do you know if any of those same fathers is also lunch buddies?
I don't know that. I would believe surely there's some of them that are, but I'm not, I don't know that for sure.
So are you looking to expand through the middle schools, or not?
It will, yeah, and we've had some discussions on that, talking some with the national chapter as well. There's been some places try to start that by itself, and it's a difficult one to start. It's easier for the small ones to want to come with dad, and, you know, you just try to start it in middle school and high school, it's a little more difficult to plug that. My daughter's in fourth grade now, I plan to continue it on with her, and continue it to middle school with her. And I think by that time, it's, you know, the middle schools have been engaged for three years now, two more years, it'll kind of be what we do. You know, as these, as these, this crop of kids in elementary school get into middle school in a couple of years, it's just a great to them, just one more year, they're already, they're used to it. But I think to start it without the kids being exposed might be difficult, so we haven't tried to throw that out there yet, but, yeah, hopefully in two, three years, we'll expand it to middle school, and we'll carry it on to high school as well. It will make it there.
Yes, it will. That's awesome.
Great job.
So, sorry, you guys, I don't know the whole history of the program, but you found this program, it's a national program?
I didn't found it.
No, I don't mean you not found it, you began, I mean, you discovered
Sure.
this program and introduced it to Joplin schools?
Correct. Yeah, it was actually started in 1997 by Tony Dungy, used to be the head coach in Indianapolis Colts. He was looking at his life and how much he wasn't involved with his kids due to his job of traveling and commitments that the NFL created for him, and kind of look on how could I get other dads involved where I wasn't so involved when, you know, when my kids were young, and it kind of spun out of that. All Pro Dad has a daily email that you can sign up for. If you don't have it, I'd encourage you, it's, it's a really good, just a quick read every, every morning. Just takes a minute to read it, and it comes to your inbox, but, you know, I've, I've been reading those for years, and I thought, now's the time, so.
We've been able to bring in from time to time, I think, at different elementary schools, a former pro athlete of some kind to come in and provide an inspirational speech of some kind, and I've seen that happen on several occasions too, which is neat.
Yeah, we're trying to get some pro athletes to come, just, some dads need a, need a hook to bring them in, so we try to use the lure of some professional athletes to bring them in, and, and it's worked well. We brought Brandon Williams, you guys may be familiar with him, he graduated from Southern last year, plays for the Baltimore Ravens. He came and spoke to the kids last year. Alan Barber from, is from Neosho, he plays for the Eagles now, he's came and spoke to the kids. We, you don't have to have a hook, but it helps. We'll do some fun things from time to time, we do the Diet Coke and Mentos experiment. If you guys haven't done it, you need to go grab one tonight and do it. It's too cool not to see. Has everybody seen that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. But we did, I think we did 46 of them last year at Eastmoreland, it's super fun. We did, we did a Harlem Shake for, for one All Pro Dad, just, just stuff to kind of create some excitement, and as Ms. Erber will tell you, at Eastmoreland, the day's different. On All Pro Dad days, and probably Dr. Huff can attest, at Cecil Floyd, the days are different. I think Cecil Floyd had 200 in attendance last month in, in one meeting, so it's, it's a pretty cool, if you haven't been to one, I invite you to come to one. I don't go to all of them, but Eastmoreland's the second Wednesday of every month, and you're invited to any one of those you'd like to come to, and we'd like to see you guys and show you what, kind of what All Pro Dad is. And it's not just dads, before someone, thought someone might ask that question. We do recognize the importance of male role models in kids' lives, and typically it's a mom that is involved in the kids', in the kids' lives, so we do ask that dad comes, stepdad, grandpa, brother, some male role model, but if those still aren't available, we tell moms, please still bring your kids. We want the kids to be involved, and we have moms and grandmas come every month as well.
One of the reasons I wanted Jared to come and visit with you all is, you know, he, he brought this to the table, and it's turned into a great program, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to thank him for, for his efforts, because I know it's taken a lot to get it to where it is, and he's got a vision for where it wants to go, and we're just letting him run with it, so we're, it's good stuff.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, last item I have, construction update. Mike Johnson's here this evening.
Last-minute substitute for Archie, he tried to make it, he went as long as he could today, but he was under the weather and just couldn't go any longer, so I'm going to try to do my best in his place. Irving is top of my list here to report on. The building is very nearing completion. We're doing finishes, flooring, casework, painting's nearly complete, we're a little bit to do yet in the K1 branch. We're putting up the light fixtures and the, all the different accessories to kind of finish it all out. We're working outside on the, on the curbs and asphalt in the front lot, and we did some landscaping this past weekend. The Lions Club made a donation and sent out a bunch of people, and worked last Saturday, and made some improvements, and planted some, some landscape material. By the time we meet next month, the building should be in our hands, it should be complete.
Wow.
Barring a few punch list items, with one exception. We're having issues with our elevator provider, Schindler, they're, they keep putting us off delivery date. We're, we're sending letters and phone calls and emails daily, that's an issue that, we've got a promise, a new promise, it moves every time we talk to them, but of it being in in time, but it's, it is a concern for us.
Where are they located?
I don't know.
Okay.
They do have the contract, they were a little bit, for seven elevators at the high school, and we are reminding them of that fact. If they can't produce with one elevator, then we're going to have to review their, their contract at the high school, so hopefully that stick will work. But so far, we haven't, they haven't, they haven't shown up, so I just wanted to make you all aware that we are facing that issue. Any questions on Irving?
I was at their Saturday, and boy, it looks nice.
Yeah, I went through there last week.
It's, it's, it's changes, it's changing very quickly at this point. East, it's a very beautiful building.
It is.
East is almost in the same position, especially the middle school part. We're almost totally complete with drywall throughout the entire facility. We're getting ready to, we're nearing completion with all painting in the middle school, working our way east towards the elementary school. That, the painting should start this week. We're out, working on curbs and guttering and landscape, or have staffed up, and you'll see a lot of landscaping going in, black dirt work. We're, the Skyfold door is being installed currently in the auditorium, and that's, that's quite a, quite a process. Casework is all going in in the middle school, and they're nearing completion with the gym floor. Of course, ceilings and floors and doors and all that is, is all, are all going in the middle school. And with the idea being they'll move from west to east, and all those workers will wind up funneling into the elementary school and be bumping into each other, actually. That's really the summary of East. Any questions on Ann and Soaring Heights? Any question? That elevator is installed, yes, it was a different elevator company, and it's been in for some time. No issues there.
Yeah.
The high school in Franklin Tech, of course, work continues on the, on the foundations, the micro piles, and the alterations necessary due to the discovery of mining activities. We're still a few weeks away from completion on that. Work, we've got work continuing on the roofs, and then the interior and exterior walls, steel erection's continuing at multiple locations. One of the neat things that you can start to see taking shape is the, the structure for the seating in the main gym. It's, you can start seeing the, the rake on that. The masons are working in multiple areas, we'll be putting up some exterior split-faced block starting next week, so we'll start seeing the exterior, the finishes going up. Windows have begun to be installed. The site work actually is, is wrapping up on storm drainage, as you'll notice that we connected the dots on the, the main drainage there at 20th Street. They're spreading black dirt, and they, the plan is to put temporary seed down to get some seed growth before winter, to stave off any erosion. We're making arrangements now for the pre-cast for the auditorium to arrive in a few weeks, and we're, we've developed a parking lot off-site on the, on the half a block we bought on ground there, about, was that 22nd, Paul? So we're parking a lot of workers up there, and you'll see more and more and more cars and more workers as the days progress. We're, we're nearing 200 now on some days. Questions on the high school?
The site itself, moving that dirt and stuff sure makes it
That helps, doesn't it?
Yes, big help.
I know that I've had some, one of our bus drivers, as, every time I see him, was complaining about that pipe that stuck out of the ground. It's finally gone.
It's gone.
So, so Mac will be happy now. Okay, I've got a quick one on the safe rooms. I don't know if you've been to Cecil Floyd, but the, the pre-cast has arrived, and it's completing this week. The crane will relocate to Stapleton this week, and the panels will start arriving. It'll take about two weeks to erect that one. We'll move from there to McKinley in two weeks after that, and then to next, in two weeks to Eastmoreland. So work on that is progressing right on schedule. Jung is, is really developing. The, the masons are out, they actually started a brick on the east side today, concrete blocks are up, they're, they're forming up for the cast-in-place roof.
Are they out there tonight?
Yeah, it's, it's taking shape. It'll probably be completed shortly after football season, unfortunately, but it may, it'll be there hopefully for track season. And the, the next batch of four, the final packages are on your consent agenda for tonight. The critical path items were approved at the special meeting, we ordered the pre-cast, and we're working on the contracts for the, the early phases, so that was the earlier meeting we had, but this will clear the deck on all of the packages, so we'll be fully operational after approval tonight, if you see fit to give it, give us approval. So that's where we are in the safe rooms.
I might note that Gil Hennessy said that out at recess at Cecil Floyd now with that crane there, the kids are just like, all looking at, so a whole new career path kind of thing.
We will.
They're staring at it.
They do like to watch that, and that brings up an issue we had today, where we'll be taking special care. Cecil Floyd was a little easier, we had a lot of room. Stapleton, right by the front walk, and McKinley are going to be particular problems, we're going to have to work with the principals to, if those panels were to fall, you can imagine how long they are, so we'll have to be, there'll be special care, we'll have safety people on duty while they're doing the lifts, so. Cecil Floyd, but they, does draw a lot of attention, so we don't want to press up against the feds, so. Any questions on that?
What's that material on the panels out there at East? Is that tin or aluminum? The, he's talking about the red
The red, the two shades of red. Yeah, that's a, that's a metal, that's a anodized metal, much like aluminum.
Because that, on the drawings, I didn't like it very much, but going out there and seeing it, it's fantastic.
I didn't either. And I'm the same as you, that, especially with the reveals and all, it's, it's got a nice look to it, I, it really grew on me. I didn't think I'd like it either, but it, it does look nice, I think.
Will that have to be painted in the future, will that fade?
It very well might. It's like, basically like your car, so it could be.
Wax.
Yeah, have to wax it.
So are the, are they pretty much maintenance-free, East and Soaring Heights and Irving?
Yes, as much as, as much as possible now on the metal finishes, it's, you know, paint is, you know, in 30 years, we'll probably be looking at some issues there. The drive-it or stucco, it's not drive-it, it's a, it's hardback stucco, you could hit it with a ball bat and it wouldn't dent it. But that will, could also fade and need reapplied or painted, you can do either. Of course, the masonry, the brick, you know, we know what that's all about.
Right.
But for the most part. It's something that might be good, Mike, just thinking forward, you know, we, we've spent a lot of time and energy on, on efficiencies in these buildings, and what we, what we've done to reduce operating costs from a mechanical standpoint, to the, you know, carpet tiles, and why we're doing carpet tiles, and, and some, some of the other finishes, and it might be a, a good topic to have, either in a work session or regular meeting next month, if you're interested, just, you know, we, we see the construction update every month, and it might be a different angle in the construction update, just to give, give our viewers, give our patrons an idea of what we're trying to do inside to save on operating costs, you know, the high efficiency bulbs, the, you know, there's a whole slew of things we've done, you know, some of the, some of the daylighting that we've done to, you know, reduce the, the amount of time that actual lights have to be on, and some of the common areas and things of that nature, so, you know, there, there's a lot to that. Is that something that we could pull together, you think?
I've already got that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, the sustainability type of issues, yeah, I've got that, we use that as a
Site-by-site basis, because we, we really spend a lot of time, you know, trying to, trying to make these buildings as efficient as possible, and within budget that we have to work with, and, you know, we've got some really great things happening with that.
And we've started some meetings that we'll, we'll use for whenever we have the, the openings, that we'll have information regarding the, the things that we've done as far as the efficiencies, but also then the learning decisions, so both sides of it, of why, why we did some things that we've, that we've done, why, why those decisions were made, and what, what is the benefit of that, and so.
That's where they're taking notes, so.
We're working on, on those documents, actually, the, the group all came together the very first time while we were all at MSBA, and so that's, it's, it's being worked on.
It'd be interesting to know how we've improved, because we've put up the three new middle schools, and what we've done differently in East that was better than what happened in North and South, just because of changes over three years.
I think we could spend a half an hour on that fairly
Well, maybe I just, just some, like, you know, of course, lighting in the gym, that, that's a biggie.
Yeah. There was a lot of lessons learned. That was one silver lining, with our recent experience in construction at the middle schools, we, there was a lot of things, that drove a lot of our decisions on, okay, we're, how are we going to do it better this time?
And that might just be a work session, but just some things that we did better, because we had the opportunity to see that that we could improve.
And we were smarter, based on our previous experience.
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll make that a priority for the next meeting, see if we can, can do some things with that. Before we, are we getting ready to cut the video? Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, we do have some.
Before we cut, before Mike gets away from us, I want to thank him, he's, anybody except build a house, or built anything, doghouse, those, there's challenges that come with that, and Mike's got a lot of projects, well, we have 16 projects, I think, right now going at the same time, and it's probably one of the largest construction projects in terms of, in terms of scope and, and quantity of projects, probably anything that's ever happened in the state of Missouri in public schools, and Mike's taken point on that. Paul's done a great job on the, on the backside supporting from a budget standpoint, of course Angie and the design teams, everybody working together, it has been a team effort to get us where we are, and things are coming together quickly, and excited about delivering on our first round of promises, to get those, those two new elementary schools, that middle school opened up here in just, just a few months, so can't speak, you know, say enough for Mike and the team we have that's been able to pull this off.
I had the kudos to Mike too, because as we, as we finished the designs, and they're going through the VE, and that's just a normal part of the process of variable engineering and figuring out, you know, how can we save a little bit of money here or there, I knew that I could trust Mike, that if it was going to impact kids and learning, he was going to come and ask me. And so those are, those are the big things that, you know, he's, he's looking out for our kids every day, not just the buildings and the finishes and all of that, and so it's nice to work with a team that works for kids every day.
And the other thing, I'm embarrassing him now, but one thing I've heard him say several times is, you know, my name's going to be on that building in terms of, you know, the, the project, he owns that, and he takes his work very serious, and, and he lives in this community, wants it done right, so appreciate his effort.
I'd like to say without Brendan, the wheels would fly off the whole operation. That's the truth.
Brendan does a nice job too, no question about that.
Nobody's getting paid, I'll tell you.
On the athletic equipment that we're going to be voting on, is that just the goals, basketball goals?
On the, on the safe rooms, yes. And what, what you've approved, all the safe rooms are equipped equally, with six basketball goals and
They just said athletic equipment, so I was assuming
Bleachers, basketball goals, pads, wall pads, those sorts of things.
Okay.
And one thing, just to remind you all, not every, every safe room is going to be exactly the same size, because that was all developed. The square footage was dependent upon the population within that five-minute walking distance as a community safe room. So there may be a little square footage difference from facility to facility, but, but they're going to be great, and they're a great space that we very much needed in all of our elementary schools, and it's going to help us from a scheduling standpoint, not only from a safety standpoint, but also from a scheduling standpoint. So we're excited.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Fun. What are we going to do after 2014?
Yeah, what, after 2014? I'm sure you'll find something.
Deep breath.
Deep breath.
Enjoy it for a while, hopefully.
Do you have anything else on the superintendent's report?
No, I don't, but one, just a real quick reminder, we had policy updates early this evening in the work session. There's a lot of those. This is first reading this evening. We'll have a second reading in November. An example of a policy update you need to be aware of, there's a child abuse and neglect policy that we are already implementing as the law currently stands. There's a law that was passed, I believe in August, the governor finally signed the bill, as part of, you know, a lot of other bills. And the governor signed the bill, and we're waiting on MSBA's official wording, but we've already trained our staff, faculty and staff on that particular law as it applies, and we're reading, you know, first reading tonight is the old policy as it was written. When second reading comes along, there'll be some language changes to align existing policy or existing law with the policy. And we'll have that wrapped up, we'll bring that to you in November. So you will see a big change in that particular policy when it comes around in November. And that's all I have.
All right. I just have a couple of things. I know several of us went to the MSBA annual meeting that was held at Lake of the Ozarks recently, and would anybody like to comment on that? No?
Don finished her.
I did. I learned a lot.
You got your certification.
I learned that I didn't know nearly as much as I thought I knew.
But it was, and it was, actually, I got, I enjoyed it. I enjoyed the sessions that I attended, so I felt like it was very much more relatable to me, so. And I was also proud to represent the new board member session, because a couple of different districts came up and asked me about things like the wifi on the buses and things like that. So it's kind of an interesting place to be where people are watching to kind of see how things go and then model their programs after ours. So it's a very good time to be a member of the Joplin community.
I had several folks come to me to say, Joplin Schools is the feature on so many different exhibits because of the different things that are happening and all of the different architecture pieces. And so our pictures of what's going on in Joplin was somewhere everywhere, so.
We were all over that book they handed out to everybody.
Yeah.
I think most of our schools, our new schools were on there. Did you want to say anything?
We, myself and you, we attended a class on concussions and athletics and stuff. Very informative. Jeff, I enjoyed it and learned a lot on that as well, and some of the other sessions that we went as well, so.
I always learn something.
I do, too.
Did you go this year?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it was great. Enjoyed it.
And then the other thing I want to mention is that the MSBA Fall Regional Meeting is Monday, October 28th, at Carthage Senior High School. I believe if you all want to go, you need to speak to Ms. Waldo.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Do we have just a head count right now of who thinks they'll be able to go?
I think I worked.
Five. Okay. I was just trying to figure out, do we want to just maybe meet here, we can arrange that.
Take a bus?
Be an email.
I'd like to take the Eagle, the Eagle Suburban, please.
Eagle One, please.
Eagle One.
If it's available. We usually have students out in it.
They can go.
Very good.
That's all on my report.
Okay.
Ms. Waldo, any public comments regarding agenda items?
Yes, we do this evening.
We have one?
Yes.
All right. Then I need to give my speech, don't I?
Yes.
I just want to say that we truly appreciate hearing from our patrons in the Joplin Schools community, and that your thoughts on agenda items presented this evening, and I can promise that your thoughts will be taken into account as we make decisions that impact the children of Joplin Schools. And so please state your name.
Thank you, Debbie Fort.
And you have three minutes. John, are you the timekeeper?
Sure. I've got my timer, too. Okay, I'm going to talk fast. Okay.
My name is Debbie Fort, and I retired this past summer as an educator with 33 years, 25 of which were in Joplin, and very grateful to this district and love this district, and thank you, Jeff, for giving me this opportunity tonight. So first, I want to say thank you to Angie and CJ. I met with them last year, and they encouraged me to think on a district level, not just on the building level, because I retired as principal at Irving. And so I took their advice to heart, and that's what I'm doing. So that's why I'm here. What I wanted to visit with you tonight about, I've got three different areas, but obviously in three minutes you can't address all three, so I'll come back again another time. But I wanted to talk about policy. It's H and policy G on your agenda. And the policies, I don't know if you have those with you or not, it's support staff leaves and absences is H, and professional staff leaves and absences is G. And what I wanted to say was, when I retired this last year, I knew that we got refunded any days we had amassed over 90 for sick days. And so I had about 100 sick days, because I've been blessed and been healthy, and thank God I didn't have to use them. But what I asked at that time was, can I donate my sick days, like, to the health pool? Because that way I felt like I was fortunate, I stayed healthy. But I still want to do some good, because I still want to give back to this district. So I'd had a conversation with Paul at that time about it. And so when I saw the agenda for tonight, I thought, this is a good time for me to bring this up, that while you guys are looking at policies, this reading and your next reading that comes up, I'd like for you to look at these two policies and see, is there anything that we can do? Because I think we, I know you guys have an excellent standard about getting our retention of our staff rate back up to where it was. And so I think this might help in that effort, in that, I guess my concern is, maybe people would just burn their sick days if they realized, I'm not going to do any good with my sick days. And so maybe looking at this policy to say, okay, here's what we will do with those sick days, so that you still feel like you're contributing something. I know probably with our current budget constraints, we probably can't pay the employees for the days that they didn't use. But I just feel like if there was something we could say to employees that have faithfully served the district, well, we're going to donate those to the sick pool, to people that have unfortunately had cancer, or something like that. So that's what I'm asking you guys to do, is to take a look at both of these policies and see, is there something that we can do? Because in a way, we're sort of negatively reinforcing staff to burn those days, because they just disappear. And we put a policy in place a few years ago that said, if you don't use your personal day, it rolls over to a sick day. So if, but people didn't then take their personal days, you end up losing them in the end. So, okay, I'm going to take 15 more seconds and say, will you also post, I tried to find the board minutes, this is my third board meeting I've been at, and I tried to find the board minutes, and the most recent post that I see on here is June 25th. Now, I realize that's when the fiscal year ends, and so maybe you're posting them in a different way on the website, but I couldn't find it. So if they're out there, can someone tell me how to find them, Clista? But otherwise, it would be great if we had these posted past June 25th, because I think an educated and informed citizenry leads to a good school district. So, okay, so look at policy G and H to see what else could we do with sick days? And get updated minutes posted.
So you're saying on employees that retire?
Right.
The unused sick days, you want those employees to have the option to donate them to the?
Rather than them just disappear?
Right.
Could we do something?
Because they're not cashed out, correctly.
Nice with them? Yeah, it varies on the professional staff, the teaching staff, the administrative staff. If, depending on what the length of your contract is, you get reimbursed for any days over 90, you get a half of a substitute pay, I think it is. So you get like $40 a day for any days over. But, you know, that was a half a year I left on the table that fortunately I was healthy and didn't have to use. But I sure would like to have done something nice with those to help someone else.
For employees in emergency type situations.
Of course, I would love to have money. I would love to have been paid for all the days I didn't use. But I understand with our reserves being down to 14, and I think I read somewhere they're going to eight to 11, but that's another conversation for another time.
Okay.
Now, on the support staff, they get 25% of their normal daily rate of pay when they retire.
Right.
But this is what I know from firsthand experience happened this year, because I had a friend who also retired from support staff, and in her case, what happened was, the sick days that she had not used, she just, let's say her retirement date was July 31st, but she had enough sick days, she just quit working in May. So in a way, she did get reimbursed for her sick days, plus she did get, because they earn vacation, because they're a 12-month employee, and I'm just a 10. I was. And so just as someone, a loyal employee that worked in this district 25 years, that was fortunate enough to not have to use sick days, I would like to have done a really nice thing and said, donate these to the sick pool for those unfortunate employees who get cancer, or, you know, something else, and they run out of days, and then they start losing money. So let us donate those days. I understand budgetary concerns, there's probably not money to, I mean, that'd be a lot of money. If you paid me for a half a year's salary, even at a half of a substitute pay, $40 a day, that's a lot of money.
This is.
But at least let us donate them, so that we feel like we're doing something altruistic, and we're helping someone else out. So that's what I'm asking you to do, is when you're looking at these two policies, maybe see what other districts do, and look at the budget and see what you can do. And then I think you probably need to take a look at equality and how the two policies are applied, because I would never have burned my sick days.
Right.
Because that's not what's in the best interest for kids. And, you know, this policy starts by saying when an employee is tardy absent or absent for an extended period of time, learning environment deteriorates and students suffer. And I know from firsthand experience as a building principal, when my teachers are out for various reasons, even your best substitute's not a quality replacement for a classroom teacher.
Sure.
So I don't want to see kids hurt in this process at all, but it would be nice if that half a year I had amassed of sick days could have been given to someone who has cancer, who's going to lose money.
Sure.
That's what I'm asking you to do.
I think Clista can show where to find the minutes.
Yeah, show me, Clista, teach me.
So if you're on the Joplin Schools website, if you go to Board of Education page.
Uh huh, that's where we are.
Right down here where it says Board Meeting Agenda Documentation.
Okay, see, I went down to the next one that says Board Meeting Minutes, thinking it would be under Board Meeting Minutes.
And then you can see all of, all the agenda items and.
Okay, so will you open one and show me, like, open to 9:10, 22, and show me how to find the minutes?
The minutes won't be posted.
It's after the meeting.
Well, but aren't they last month's minutes? That's what I'm asking, how do I find last month's minutes in the month?
Because it says we approved the meeting. John, they should be there, because it says we approved the minutes for September 24th and October 9th on our consent agenda.
They will be.
Once they're approved, they'll go on the other page.
I think the expert knows over here.
The most recent is only going to be August. Is that correct?
So then do I look on August to find?
Yeah, under September's meeting?
I guess I'm asking.
We approved the next one.
Can they just be put there under Board Meeting Minutes and make it easy for our community to find them?
We can, we can make that change. With the E-Board Solutions, there's been some changes, and we can work on that, so it's easier.
Yeah. Well, and I knew the fiscal year ends in June, so I thought, well, when the fiscal year ends, maybe they went to a new system. But I searched and searched and didn't find them. And I thought, gosh, it'd just be easy if it was right there under Board Meeting Minutes for our community to find, so.
We'll get it fixed.
I appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome. Thanks. It was a great meeting, good to get caught up on everything that's going on in the district.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
She'll move.
Second. That would be Mr. Still and Mr. Kimbrough. Any discussion on consent agenda? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Regular agenda. I assume this would be Mr. Barr with accounts payable.
This would be. President Flowers, we have accounts payable, the attached bill list items for payment of materials, equipment, services, salaries and benefits in both instructional and support areas. The administration recommends the Board of Education approve payment of bills in an amount of $17,504,868.
She'll move.
Second. That would once again be Mr. Still and Mr. Kimbrough. Any discussion?
Thank you once again, Paul, and well, your team.
All those pretty pictures.
That's a lot.
That's a lot of paperwork to generate that much money.
Please vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Discussion items.
I have two discussion items. I'm going to throw one over to Dawn here in a minute. Hopefully she'll be talking about the Jefferson deal.
Yes.
Oh, well, that would, okay.
I have two also, so let's split it.
And that was. I would like to encourage people to support the Color Estes program through our Joplin High School. They're paying it forward. I think there are some commercials on Jet 14. I believe that there's some links on Jet 14, and maybe scrolling after our board meeting. Also, I'd like to encourage people to vote for the high school, for the State Farm money that's available to us.
Celebrate My Drive.
Celebrate my. Through State Farm.
Thank you. Anyways, and then at Jefferson Elementary, they had an awesome fundraiser for water gardens, and next year, y'all, whoever didn't get to attend, that was way above and beyond anything I've ever seen.
The Strolling Strings from the high school performed. They are fabulous, really. I was very impressed with their talent. Amazing. Beautiful artwork. The Color Estes, also, they have a fundraiser, Raise 28, and that's at StayClassy.com, but you can go to ColorEstes.org, and there's a link there, and you can create your own fundraising website page, so you can kind of challenge your friends and relatives, which is always really fun to do in our family, to see who can raise the most money, maybe, and kind of spread the word, even on a national level for that. So I'm really excited about that project, I think. And it was completely, it's student-run. The students had the idea. They collaborated with Mr. Craven and Art Feeds to put this together, and it's completely student-driven. I'm just so proud of our students for coming up with this idea and really following through with it. And I'm thankful for the leadership that has also supported them to do that, so. And the Celebrate My Drive, did you mention that we have an opportunity to win a $100,000 grant?
I did, but you can.
Or, or a concert by Kelly Clarkson. I've seen her live, and the woman can sing lying down signing autographs. She is amazing. So make sure you go to that website and vote for Joplin High School, so.
And I want to give a shout out to Tobin Schultz. He won the Melken Award, very well-deserved, awesome teacher. So if you see him, give him a high five. They're at the high school. And also to Ms. Stout, who is golfing for our high school for state, and we have several swimmers that have pulled by.
She finished 11th today.
They're still playing.
Oh, they're still playing? Oh, she qualified?
No, it's done, two days.
Finished, yeah. She finished in 11th place, so, yeah.
Pretty good.
That's awesome.
Soccer team's doing wonderful.
Can I throw in the Fisher, was also a state?
Yeah. This past weekend was Maple Leaf, and we got to see, I know CJ was there, got to see all of our middle school bands and the high school band. Band, the high school band performed in a field show competition, and their drum majors received first place in their division. Their percussion received first place in their division, so they had long days at Maple Leaf Saturday, all of them, so.
The North received a one for that same competition.
Yep.
We have some musicians, we like it.
It's a lot going on this week.
A lot of activities going on.
Yeah.
South Middle School played football tonight, won, beat McGonally 36 to 14.
We'll see.
I'm pretty happy with that. And then I also want to make a comment about the wifi on the school buses. Once again, South Middle School went to Pittsburgh, Kansas, the other night to play a game, and my son was more excited after the game about being able to complete his homework on the bus on the way than he was about playing football.
Yay.
Fantastic.
Go learning.
So, yeah. So I just think that's a great idea, that wifi on those buses, that's fantastic.
fantastic.
Awesome.
Anybody else with discussion items?
Just remember those kids, as Sue Day said earlier, there's a group of them taking their ACTs this Saturday.
Then I would like to thank everybody watching at home on Jet 14. And I will say that this meeting is adjourned, and I will take a motion to go into closed session.
Maybe we go into closed session for the various numbers after the RSMO.
Second.
Second.
Don, go ahead.
Yes.
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 May 22nd, 2011, is a date that will forever have meaning for the people of Joplin, Missouri.
On that day, many lives changed.
Houses and businesses were destroyed.
And Joplin became more than just a dot on a map.
Following this tragedy came one of the most beautiful displays of charity-
The Midwest has ever seen.
People from all corners of the United States and the globe came to Joplin and helped us as we picked up the pieces of our lives.
Now it is time for us to shift our attention-
To a community that needs help.
Estes Park, Colorado.
Estes Park, Colorado.
Estes Park, Colorado is currently rebuilding their town-
After deadly flooding destroyed homes, businesses-
And lives.
Joplin Schools, Joplin Schools and Art Feeds are partnering together to launch Color Estes.
Color Estes.
Color Estes.
A relief effort designed to provide therapeutic art and creative education-
To the children of Estes Park Schools.
Here's where you come in.
Here's where you come in.
Color Estes will be accepting donations-
To help pay for art packs and transportation-
Of volunteers to Estes Park.
Donate now by going to ColorEstes.org.
And clicking on the donate button.
Or visit and participate in our upcoming community events.
This is our chance to repay the kindness shown to us.
And to show support for a community that needs our help.
You can help us, Color Estes.
You can help us, Color Estes.
You can help us, Color Estes.